We'll call the meeting to order, the Louisville Town Council meeting for January of 2013. First order of business will be the roll call of our council and staff. And I'll do that by introducing our council members to you. My immediate right is council person or lady, Sandra Maugh. Oliver, Mr. Ed Smith, Councilman Fred Franklin. To the left is Councilman Robert Green, Councilman Tom Lawson, Councilman Jeff Zinger. I'm Dan Few, and it's my privilege and pleasure to be the mayor of Louisville. We have our staff with us tonight, headed by our town manager, Mr. Hank Perkins, our town attorney, Mr. Bo Couth, our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker, our town finance officer and assistant town manager, Kathy Bruce. And we are taping tonight's session in the rear of our public information officer, Lynn Callen. Doing the orders there. With that, I think the agenda that you have before you is what was approved at our briefing session this last Thursday night. So if you need a moment to go down through the agenda, we'll take that moment at this time. If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Slow move, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, we do have an agenda for tonight's meeting, and we'll ask our manager to lead us to the consent agenda.
Thank you. The consent agenda this evening consists of four items. The first item is Resolution 2013-002, which is the acceptance of the financials from November 2012. The second item is the approval of council planning board joint meeting minutes from November 29th of 2012. Third item is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from December 5th of 2012. Last item is the approval of council meeting regular minutes from December 13th of 2012.
Council, do you have any questions of the manager concerning any of the items on the consent agenda? What's your pleasure?
Motion for approval.
One second. Motion for approval, one second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Next item.
Okay, and the presentations angle proclamations. A, consent proclamations, we have none this evening. B, for presentations, we do have Mr. Glenn Simmons here of City County Planning, and he is going to be doing, helping us with a presentation on Legacy 2030 Comprehensive Plan, of which we will have a public hearing later in the evening.
Glenn, you're on, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be back this Thursday evening. That was all call out as here last Thursday, and we had a fairly detailed discussion about the Legacy Comprehensive Plan update. We're asking for a resolution from the town of Louisville as we are asking for resolutions for all various municipalities throughout Forsyth County endorsing this comprehensive plan for the entirety of Forsyth County. Since we did have a fairly involved discussion last time, and we had even a pretty spirited discussion last night with the planning board, just err on the side of brevity, and then after our questions, of course, I'll be glad to try to answer them this evening. The Legacy Comprehensive Plan, current comprehensive plan, as you all know, is adopted about 10 or 12 years ago. This has been the plan that's been served as a basic guide for all of planning in Forsyth County. It's really the broad brush, 30,000-foot view of Forsyth County, looking at how the community's growing in terms of all aspects of its land use, transportation, economic development. So it's really a chance to kind of, every so often, for the entire county to get together to discuss the future of what's going on in the county, some of the trends, some of the patterns of development, some of the issues facing our borough in this part of the county, or the state, I should say. This plan was adopted in 2001 by Louisville and all its municipalities. It focuses on how best we prepare for fiscal growth and development in the community. And since that time, there's been a lot of action items that have been completed within the recommendations of the original Legacy Plan. So it's time to look at what is in store for us in the future. There are a number of new trends that have happened both nationally and locally over the last 10 years that we wanted to look at critically and think about how that affects our future. And perhaps the most important consideration is the simple fact that the State Demographer anticipates that we can expect another 120,000 more people living in Forsyth County by the year 2030. And just to kind of put that in perspective, it's kind of like if over the next 20 years the city of High Point were to move into Forsyth County. It's not, it's incremental, of course, and in fact, this additional population growth is pretty much a straight-line population extension, nonetheless, we are in a growing part of the country. And how that growth occurs, how we handle that growth, obviously is important to all of us in Forsyth County. The Legacy Plan update was initiated in April of 2011, and we had a number of initial meetings where we took various components of the plan, made presentations about staff recommendations, and really sought a great deal of public feedback on the plan. So we had a lot of public involvement, meetings, participation. After we got our draft plan together, we circulated that to all of various municipalities, the planning directors and town managers and so forth, and got additional comment, not just from citizens, but also from various staffs who were frequently involved in some of the planning efforts in the various jurisdictions. We also made seven presentations to various locations throughout the county. The one closest here was at West High School. We had a number of people come to that and also share their opinions and have a chance to hear what the recommendations were about. We also made presentations to a number of community groups, Chamber of Commerce, gosh, just any number of groups, I can't remember offhand how many there were, just to kind of spread the word about what this is about. There was a website participation. We had about 21,000 folks who visited our website. We've used some new innovative techniques to try to bring out folks on Facebook and various other ways to get public participation. And overall, we had about 450 attendees come to our meetings. The Legacy update really has three themes to kind of run through the various chapters. They are fiscal responsibility, sustainable growth, and livable design. And all these are sort of interrelated, but one of the key considerations is as we grow, we want to grow it in a smart way so that the development that does occur, the public investments that are made in our communities, have a positive return on investment. So we're keeping a close eye on what kinds of public investments really provide that return on investment. That's one of the aspects of this plan that some of you may have picked up from looking at various chapters. Sustainable growth, obviously, that's part of it as well. How do we have this full range of living and working environments from very intense urban environments to suburban, to small town, rural? All of that can happen in a relatively small county geographically, but it has to be done in a way that really respects the various aspects of what people in our community find I mentioned earlier, there are about, I think there are 13 chapters in the Legacy Plan. The first four chapters really dealt with some background information and trends and so forth, looking at sort of the big picture items in terms of how we've grown based on some physiographic features in our landscape that really say a lot about how public infrastructure can be put in. We had a number of chapters dealing with various components, land use, transportation, economic development, environmental quality. Healthy, complete, and equitable communities was one chapter that was a little bit unique in the sense that we really started to look at the positive relationship between fiscal aspects of our community and how it relates to health, not just in terms of exercise and greenways and sidewalks and things that would promote that type of physical activity, but also there's a lot of interest now in locally grown foods, local food access and things like that that we want to bring into this plan as well. And then we, as I mentioned, we summed up with some action items, looking at how we use this plan to address our area plans. Of course, the town of Louisville has its own comprehensive plan. We'd like to hope that as Louisville updates its comprehensive plan from time to time, that might refer back to the Legacy document as for some general direction and some ideas about the way to kind of look at the overall county and how the town and its jurisdiction fits any of that. How we use it with our area plans is systematically, we go around the county and update our plans, and we use these principles of Legacy as a background for those updates. Lastly, as I mentioned, the public, the key public investments, as we look at our capital improvement plans, we look at various ways to allocate investments and catalyze private investment, grow the tax base. It's really important we think about those things that we do that really work in our favor and don't wind up costing more than they bring in in terms of tax revenues. I mentioned about some of the trends. So I mentioned North Carolina is one of the highest-growth states in the country. Piedmont Crescent area from the Charlotte area, the 85 corridor, to the triad, to the triangle area, is one of the fastest-growing areas in the state. I mentioned about the projections of the demographer for triad and Forsyth County in terms of our growth. We're situated between two of the fastest-growing regions in the country, between Raleigh and the Charlotte areas, so we can expect to get our share of growth, at least as much as what we've seen in the past. In fact, I would say that in the past, the demographer has underestimated our growth rate. There's also a lot of diversifying household types and residential needs. As an aging population, in some ways, we hear a lot of folks waiting for specific planning considerations adapted to that type of need. Also, generation, the actual generation law showing a lot more preference for living in more urban environments. I'd say that everybody wants to do that, but there's certainly a segment of the population that is interested in that. And also, just the increase of fuel costs and so forth, it's really kind of gotten a lot of folks thinking perhaps a little differently about how they live and work, and where they kind of relate to their job and shopping and those kinds of things. Over the last 50, 60 years, we've seen patterns of growth that have really filled up the central portion of Forsyth County. Back in 1948, you could see Wessensalem and Courageville, the only two incorporated municipalities in Forsyth County. Since that time, there have been six other municipalities that have incorporated in the county, and you see the patterns of organized growth that's happened since then. What's interesting is that line that you see around the edge, the Lenny Creek Basin line, that's the one that runs up through here, is pretty important in terms of that providing the containers for our gravity sewer system. And it's interesting, I mentioned this before, but I am always fascinated by the fact that when the marivians first moved here, in the marivian tract, that gold box in the middle, that encompassed the largest part of the Lenny Creek Basin. And that Lenny Creek Basin is almost like the blueprint for our sewerage system. Basically, you have all these streams that converge at one point before Deuce County, and that allows for a very cost-effective gravity sewer system. In fact, we've been told by a lot of site selection experts that our county, our utility system has, it may be, it certainly was the best in the Southeast, both in terms of water supply and sewer treatment. And given the, some of the consequences for lack of water in various places, we're really fortunate to have that distinction. What it does, though, is it suggests that most of the development that would occur in Forsyth County would happen in that area that is most easily served by additional services, which is that Lenny Creek Basin. We've used up a good bit of land over the last number of years, and in fact, if we continue developing at the same rate we have for the last 20 or 30 years, over the next 20 years, we will literally run out of serviceable land. Of course, it won't happen like that exactly, but it does put a, make a point that we want to be very conscious about our land resources and how we take, how we use those in a way that helps the city, helps build a tax base, doesn't promote folks to move over into other counties in ways that might erode that, that economic vitality of our county. The, that available amount, that 31%, is what is undeveloped land within the Lenny Creek Basin. That would include redevelopment not only for homes, but also for other types of modern residential uses, utilities, roads, schools, some of that's floodplains, so even that 31% is not as big as it might appear. And again, I'm going to spend a lot of time on this tonight, but the growth management plan is probably the key map in this whole document. And what it does is, it really takes into account existing patterns of development, both historically and what's on the ground today. It looks at the physiographic features of the landscape with respect to the things I just mentioned in Lenny Creek Basin. And when you look at the northeastern quadrant of the county, you see the Lenny Creek, excuse me, the Blue's Creek, Drange Basin, and the Dan River, which is sort of an area that would probably cost maybe eight times as much to serve with sewer as would be the central portion of the county. Same thing along the Yak and River. So we really want to take advantage of the existing infrastructure. One way to do that is to also focus new growth and development on those areas that are individually de asterix, those are existing areas of commercial, non-residential development that have the potential to redevelop in some ways that can make those areas grow in their tax base, but also take the pressure off of development that might otherwise go into our established neighborhoods, that might go into our rural areas, and allow us to make a better use of, like I say, existing development that is maybe underutilized. One of the best examples of that, of course, is what's going on downtown in Wessensalem with the adaptive reuse of some of the old rentals buildings and taking advantage of the straight tax credits and so forth. The same thing can be said of taking advantage of older shopping centers that are underutilized, looking at more mixed-use development, where you have a mixture of residential, office, retail, commercial, so that you have a more walkable environment, where folks don't have to get in a car necessarily and drive everywhere for everything. Again, we're certainly going to have plenty of cars, but the more that we can begin to encourage and make investments in these areas that begin to create these nodes of mixed-use development, the less pressure we put on the rest of the county in terms of increased traffic, increased pollution, some of those kinds of things. So I mentioned the area plan, the comprehensive plan is used very much in a lot of our plans for smaller-scale plans for different neighborhoods through Forsyth County, Wessensalem. We're in the process of, having a shorter process for updating our area plans, and so we use the principles and recommendations of the Legacy Plan as a way to help kind of frame the issues and discussions for those more detailed plans where we, they then serve as the basis for our recommendations on zoning requests and those kinds of things that may come through. So the comprehensive plan is like 30,000 feet, the area plan is like 10,000 feet, and of course, when you get into zoning requests and those kinds of things, you're right down there on ground level, and you're kicking the dirt and really seeing what's going on. So that's sort of the hierarchy, if you will, of our planning strategy and how it relates to the things that happen on the ground. I'll just throw this slide in for good measure of this. We talked about it before, but on a per acre basis, if you look at the bar graph on the far left, it shows the average per acre value of land in Forsyth County, it's $121,000. But if you look at where more intense development occurs, whether it be in the downtown of Wessensalem where the property values are $1.6 million per acre, or in the small-town centers where you see the property values of $350,000 per acre. What you see is that capturing part of that growth within those areas helps to grow the tax base without an appreciable amount of additional infrastructure cost, so that it's a more, it's a good investment, in other words, and more and more people are valuing those urban centers and the small-town downtown centers, as well as downtown of Wessensalem, all activity centers in their own right. So it's just a way to kind of look at how we can grow our population, do it in a way that where the density of population in those urban centers creates the vitality of a community. And a lot of things, a lot of times, when folks think of density, they think of it in terms of negative aspects of traffic, pollution, and things like that, so just to kind of keep that in mind. I mentioned the other night that the city of Ashville quadrupled, or at least multiplied by a threefold, the value of its tax base in downtown just by making use, utilizing, underutilized or vacant space that was there but hadn't been occupied in, for 40 years. And lastly, I'll just say that the, you know, coming to you all tonight, we've asked for your support in the Legacy Comprehensive Plan. We've done our best to try to make this information known throughout the community. The City County Planning Board and the City Council of Wessensalem, as well as the Forsyth County Commissioners have adopted this plan. And that's kind of long and short of it. I'm happy, of course, to answer any questions you all might have. Otherwise, that's pretty much the message I wanted to share with you this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn, appreciate that. That's a very good overview. Hope those in the audience have a better understanding of what Legacy is all about and what the plans are for the future. We will have later in our meeting a public hearing concerning this Legacy 2030 plan. Will you be able to stay further later in our meeting at that point? Maybe we can just, if you have questions, just hold it for the public hearing aspect of our meeting tonight. So we'll go to the next item of business.
Okay, next item will be the public forum.
This is the first of two opportunities that we have in each and every one of our regular meetings, for the citizens to come forward and to address the council. It may be something concerning the items that are on the agenda for that particular meeting or tonight's meeting in, or it could be something that you just want to share with the council and bring some issue for them. What we do is that we ask that if you want to address the council at this time, that you come forward to the microphone, that you state your name, your address. We ask that you do limit your comments or your address to no more than three minutes, and we want to make it very clear that it is a, it's kind of a one-way conversation. We listen to you and don't necessarily respond at that particular moment. So is there anyone, I think I've got a little sound-up sheet, Ms. Jackie Seitz, that you...
No, I understand the comprehensive plan a little better.
Oh, okay, very good. Is anyone else, we've got very limited attendance tonight, does anyone else wish to address council at this time? If not, just remind you that we do have forums at the rear of the table, at the rear of the chambers, that where you can put, submit a written question or comment, and we will entertain it from that aspect. So having no one to participate, we will close the public forum for, the first public forum for tonight, and go to the next item of business.
Yes, sir. Under Section 5, Purchases and Contracts, there are none for consideration this evening. Moving on to Section 6, Boarding Community Appointments, getting our no Board of Committee or Community Appointments for consideration this evening. Seven, Old Business, we have no Old Businesses listed for consideration this evening. And then, A, that does bring us to the public hearing section, and as previously stated, we do have a public hearing for the Legacy 2030 Plan. And also attached to the materials is Resolution 2013-001, which will be for consideration following the public hearing.
Before I, this is a council, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions of either the manager or Mr. Simmons concerning his address tonight, or any aspect of the 2030 Legacy Plan? Okay?
Counselor, can I ask?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions if I came in.
Sure.
I just want to be sure and clear. You and I talked a little bit, this Comprehensive Plan, Legacy Plan, does not supersede local comprehensive plans, correct?
That's correct.
All right, the reason I wanted to ask is because, as you and I spoke of, there is plans for a school going in inside the jurisdiction in an area that portions of are currently dedicated as GMA 5. Some of that is in our jurisdiction, some of the surrounding areas of the county. So if our comprehensive plan, for example, allowed for an extension of sewer into an area where there was a school, and allowed for an area that's currently ruled to become growth, that would not be inconsistent with the plan?
Maybe you should understand, first of all, there's nothing in this plan that would prohibit the town from doing anything it wishes to do from, it's hard to label, I would say. But I think the point of being is, if there's a school, for example, we have no control where a school decided to acquire land for its purposes. So if the school were to acquire land in an area that doesn't currently have sewer in it, is in the area that we would recommend that sewer not be extended, and for whatever reasons it's determined that sewer needs to be extended on that basis of whatever that circumstances were, there's nothing in this plan that would prohibit that.
So if it was in the town, the town's comprehensive plan were applicable to that, then that would be allowed?
Absolutely.
So the Legacy, the Legacy Plan would not override our comprehensive?
Right, there's nothing in this plan that disallows anything, nor does it require or do anything. It's a dajur yonma.
Okay, and then subsequent to that, the areas that the county has been designated now as rule or as GMA 5, if I understand that correctly, their intention is in those areas that is within their jurisdiction, that infrastructure, things such as sewer, it's their intention that that not be extended in those areas, their jurisdiction, that they currently have designated as rule in that land use.
It's recommendation of the Council to plan that that be the case, yes?
So, I was, I was just gonna say, and the resolution that's been prepared, and your materials expressly says that Louisville Comprehensive Plan controls in the event of any discrepancies or differences between them, the Louisville Comprehensive Plan controls all the Legacy plans.
So then, so the purpose of this is just advisory? So then, if it's, we have kind of this big plan, and we have all these municipalities that say, well, it's okay, but I don't have to do anything yet. I'm just trying to understand the, I mean, is this just kind of vision casting kind of thing, or?
It is that, but it's also, I think, more than that, Legacy Life believes that it's more than that, in the sense it's a chance for the entire county, all of the various jurisdictions, to get together, look at data that's come to light, that wasn't available to us over the last 10 years, look at what has been done over the last number of years, look in ways that we might take advantage of economic growth opportunities that are coming to the entire county, and then think about how we, as a county, work together with all of the various municipalities to take best advantage of that growth and to avoid some of the pitfalls that might happen otherwise if we didn't have a plan for how we grow.
And the Comprehensive Plans, including the Legacy, do have some statutory implications. There are reference in the statutes such that, and you will see, in the case of any sort of a rezoning application, staff reports will contain provisions talking about whether or not the proposed rezoning is consistent with Louisville Comprehensive Plan and Legacy. Now, again, to be simply differ consistency, which has to do with Louisville Comprehensive Plan, so, but otherwise, where things aren't addressed in the Louisville Comprehensive Plan, but are in Legacy, then there will be a staff report with regard to whether the proposed rezoning is consistent with those things.
Is there any possibility that if, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here, that if there's any possibility that Louisville deems something forthcoming for its constituents and it does conflict with the Legacy Plan, but not with Louisville's?
You can still pass anything, as a matter of fact, you can, it can be inconsistent with the Louisville Comprehensive Plan, and you can still act in accordance with what the council wishes, it's just you need, you need to state why, you know, you indicate how it differs, and why you see fit, you think it's appropriate in this situation to adopt, wherever the measure might be, even though it might be inconsistent with Louisville Comprehensive Plan. Obviously, these plans go for periods of time, next year's circumstances might be so different conceivably that they would not have been under consideration by folks who put together the Louisville Comprehensive Plan update or Legacy 2030 update. So you may say, sir, things have changed, and this is why we're going to go against them. So the statutes do not require you to actually follow it, they simply do, they do require you to state why it is you'd be moving away from whatever provisions are. They don't bind you.
There been any discussion downtown with Glenn about loan planning staff after this is adopted, which I assume probably will be by reference, it's a pretty good document, of moving forward in an attempt to codify some of the aspects of this collectively, perhaps?
Well, that's a good point. There are a number of recommendations in this plan, some of them finding ways into specific recommendations and more detail the area plans, as I mentioned, and some of them may find this way into your comprehensive plan by reference, or not by reference, but by using it as a model or a set of recommendations to consider. by using it as a model or a set of recommendations to consider. There are also recommendations in the comprehensive plan that might suggest changes in ordinances themselves to allow for more flexibility for infill development, for example, or allow for more flexibility for a mixture of uses. Those recommendations, all those things would be, if there's one that might be, we might go to our planning board, our planning board may ask us to take Item Five in our recommendations to make a modified ordinance for some purpose, we would take that on, and just like any ordinance provision, we would shop that around, get a lot of participation discussion from various interest groups who have a stake in that matter, and then bring that through a process, in which case it would be handled very much like a zoning case, where we go through a public hearing with the planning board and the elected boards, and then that decision on that ordinance provision would be made on the merits of that ordinance itself. The comprehensive plan might propose or initiate discussion on that, but it doesn't presume that that ordinance would be necessarily adopted. If it does, it may be the basis upon which the planning board or the council might ask plus staff to look into developing a revision.
Because I'd be hopeful, maybe city-county planning board, for example, you talked about potential school site, that would be near Winston-Salem County and Louisville, all but one another, and it would seem to me that, I know Paul had mentioned, maybe reestablishing that planners' roundtable, but maybe city-county could initiate a collective dialogue in areas like that, where you can develop an area plan that's going to be multi-jurisdiction.
That does quite, that could be, very much be a possibility. I will say, though, that with respect to schools, for example, and churches as another example, that those uses are allowed in any zoning district without a zoning change. So as a use by right, with planning board review, those schools and churches are two of several other examples where, you know, irrespective of what the plan says, or even what somebody may have an objection to that and say, that unless the ordinance changes to make it zoning change, then those uses are allowed basically anywhere in the county just as a matter of choice.
Yeah. About the area plan, connectivity sidewalks, you know, what we see around that area, all that sort of.
Any other members of the council have questions before we go into the public hearing? Thank you, Glenn, for answering those questions. At this time, then, we will open the public hearing for the town's acceptance of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Legacy 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to come forward and to either state your favorability or non-favorability of the Louisville town accepting this plan as presented? Okay. Having no takers, we will close the public hearing and go to discussion with council. I have one thing, and Mr. Simmons mentioned it earlier, about other comprehensive discussions that were held last night at the planning board. I thank the Hoof Council to know what some of the subject matter was concerning that, those discussions.
Let me say, I was present at the planning board meeting, of course, and there were wide-ranging discussions about it, there were not so much particular objections to it. I think some of the, there were observations made by some members about the nature and location and the development of some of the activity centers. Of course, that map pretty much notes where they are. Discussion was along the lines of, we centered a lot of long areas in Winston-Salem and not so much in Louisville. But there was, it was a fair amount of discussion, it went through some of the chapters more thoroughly than others. Ultimately, the plan was recommended for approval unanimously by the planning board, however. There was no dissent issued regarding approval.
I see that Mr. Marty is with us tonight. Council, do you have any questions of our planner concerning the last night's public hearing at the planning board or any of the aspects of the Legacy Plan and its effect on Louisville? Anyone?
Was last night the first time the planning board saw it as well?
It was. The clerk had sent out an email earlier, I think in December, with a recommendation and a link to the 2030 website with a recommendation that they look at it over the holidays and be prepared, be prepared to discuss it in January, so that's where we were.
I think at least half the board was agreement last week, got the same presentation.
They were.
Yeah, four of them were.
So they might have blanked on it last night.
No.
And is there some kind of timeline on this? It seems like this is coming, it's like...
Could be fast.
Well, yeah. Planning board gets to hear it, see it, public, boom, vote on it, and then the next night it's us. Is there some kind of deadline, or is?
Marty or Mr. Simmons, maybe you can answer that?
Go ahead, Mr. There's no deadline. We would like to, of course, move it forward as much as we could, as fast as we could, to the extent that we'd like it to publish sometime in March, if that's possible. We're shopping around to all the municipalities, some have already adopted it, others haven't. I will say that, as I tried to mention earlier, there's been a lot of discussion on this item over the last year and a half. We tried to share information with the various municipalities and with the planning boards and planning staff over the last year and a half. We've had a number of public meetings, we've come out to a number of venues where it'd be convenient for people to come and participate and discuss the plan. So I like to think that this isn't last minute that we're bringing to you. It's been a lot of opportunity, we try to advertise it, we get public comment, both from organized groups and boards throughout the process. But I mean, to the extent that, you know, you need more time, that's fine, I say we'd like to see it done as fast as we, as we practical do, but certainly a product if you make a choice, I think is most comfortable for you.
Well, we appreciate it very much, you know, the extent that you and the staff of CCM Planning have gone to try and inform the public. Maybe we as the council are the least informed of the public. Any other questions concerning the plan?
I'll make a motion to adopt 001, pending a second. Would also like to thank Glenn for coming out again tonight and for the benefit of the public that's here. Glenn worked with us here prior to us getting our own planner. He and Tony McGee spent countless hours working the ordinance, driving us around on the planning board at that time. So it's great to see you, Glenn, again, Glenn, and thank you for your time both last week and tonight.
Seven. Have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Just one comment. I think it would be good for us to have our planning board look at this a little more in depth in terms of how it impacts Louisville, in terms of what we're specifically, in terms of what we're signing on for. Just seems that we should look at it through the lines of how it impacts specifically our constituents for what's worth.
Well, I think if I've understood correctly, that our own comprehensive plan takes precedence over anything that's in some substantial, is that, you understand that, right?
I understand that. We're still supporting.
Well, that's true.
So that could bite.
Well, being that we do have a motion in a second. I think we have to take care of that business first. Sorry?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion in a second for, to approve the resolution accepting the plan? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any other? The plan does accept, has been accepted, and so understand your concern, Mr. Dinger, and maybe we can take those aspects into consideration, even though we have accepted it. Okay. Go to the next item of business.
Okay, the next section is unfinished business, there is none for this evening. Under new business, there is no new business for consideration this evening. For the section of administrative reports, we have under A, upcoming events at Shalford Square, town holidays, and as you will see in the materials in your packet, there are three events on the topic, that will be scheduled for January 21st. There will be the observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday, and town hall will be closed. On March 9th, 2013, Shalford Square will be having a, I guess I'd say wedding. And then on March 29th, Good Friday, will be observed.
Any questions from council concerning the upcoming events at Shalford Square or other public venues? We'll go to the next item.
Okay. The next section is giving a report concerning the Harper Road lift station. As the council took action last week in its briefing meeting on January 3rd, it was done so for, the town of Louisville was under a time constraint for taking some action. The matter of consideration that started upon last week was whether or not the town of Louisville was interested in obtaining capacity in a proposed lift station being constructed by City-County Utilities Commission. They approached the town of Louisville for whether or not it had any desire to become involved with the lift station for capacity. After a lot of consideration and talk and meetings were conducted, a lot of it was through the Administrative Committee, it was formed by members Councilman Zamer, Councilman Lawson, myself, Kathy Bruce, and with the assistance of Michael Quest of Municipal Engineering Services. We came forward with a recommendation last week for the town council to accept our recommendation to move forward with the City-County Utilities Commission for the acceptance and acquisition of .75 million gallons per day of sewer capacity to be utilized at some point in the future by the town of Louisville for the purpose of providing capacity for replacement of septic systems in town and the future development of that side of predominantly the south end of Louisville, south of 421. The other option that had been whittled down for consideration that was considered by the group was the consideration of adopting up to $1.5 million worth of sewer capacity in the same lift station. In the end, again, the recommendation of the Administrative Committee that had informed was to recommend that the town of Louisville accept .75 in capacity. I believe we felt like that that was an ample amount of sewer capacity that could serve the existing homes as well as future infill development within the town borders and adequately supply the future needs of that side of town. It was also with the idea that we would wait for CCUC to conduct a 201 study that they're doing in western Forsyth County for the study of their overall infrastructure for sewer, with the mind that we were going to keep a look at existing capacity or future capacity that may become available through the Muddy Creek Interceptor and available from our sewer system that already exists in Louisville north of 421. Finally, the idea being that if sewer capacity was available through the existing sewer system, it would become financially a better consideration to serve infrastructure improvements up in north, the north side of 421, from an extension of the existing sewer system in Louisville than it would be for the consideration of sewer system north of 421 coming up from Harper Road through south Louisville and the Willamette-Runningby subdivisions in that part of town. The town did, after deliberation and discussion last week, accept the recommendation of the Administrative Committee with the acceptance of .75 million gallons per day, and this is contingent on the successful negotiation of a service agreement or otherwise called a franchise agreement between the town of Louisville and City-County Utilities, and that we would be playing a, more of a conservative wait-and-see attitude on the potential viability of sewer capacity through other methods or other avenues within town. So that is generally a fairly detailed report for the good of the order for those who were not able to attend last week.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate that overview thing, it's very comprehensive, really, truly.
Thank you.
Summed up extremely well what we had before us, what the results were probably the council's decision.
And lastly, I guess, the results were financially consideration, I didn't say anything about that. Consideration of .75 was $600,000. The consideration for if we had gone with the 1.5 million would have been $1 million. So given the price considerations and all of the considerations, we opted for the cheaper of the two choices.
And that is certainly worth noting.
Yes, yes, that's.
Substantial.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to also be clear that we as a council acted and approved that recommendation.
Yes, at the briefing, matter of fact, as the manager said earlier, because of some time constraints with the engineering aspects, I guess, of the overall plan. So, but when we do things of that nature, take action, add our briefings, we certainly want to notify the public as to what transpired and the reasons for that, so that's the reason for tonight's explanation also. Okay, thank you very much. Next item.
The next item was application for board seats closed January 31st of this month. So if you have any desire to be considered for any board important vacancies that may be present at this time, that is the deadline for consideration of applications.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Based upon Mr. Lawson's presentation that's coming up in February, if there is a need to reopen one of the boards' applications based upon any information you may hear out of that, is it okay at that point to extend the deadline?
I would feel so. I don't think that there would be anything by the application deadline that would prohibit the consideration of additional considerations for a newly formed review committee if that was in fact the way the will be worked for the future. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Certainly, there'd been no decision on that.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
The total discussion had, basically, had to retreat.
Had to retreat. That's like right after the deadline.
Any, I take it that, well, I'm pretty sure, just to confirm, that these seats availabilities and the information concerning them have been on our website, also, I don't know about Channel Six, but I know in our newsletter, this latest edition of it, they were publicized.
Yes.
All right. So that brings, unless there's any other discussion on those vacancies and board seats, we'll go to our next order of business, which is the, for the good of the order, and it is the second opportunity for public comments. So, and same ground rules as before, if we have anyone in our audience that wishes to address council, ask that you come forward to the microphones, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, and we will listen, but not necessarily respond. Anyone wish to address council at this time? We will close the public comment section, the second public comment section of tonight's meeting, and just to remind our audience, those in the audience, that we do have forms available for written comments. With that, we'll go to council comments or council discussion. Anything at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for council to, I know they have our, the flowers are in the house, keep those, keep that family in your thoughts the next few days.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. Well, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, former council member, long-term council member, Larry Sowers, wife and passed away, I think it was yesterday, I think before yesterday, oh, it was yesterday, and, no, before yesterday. But anyhow, I think there is going to be memorial service at about 5:00, Saturday afternoon.
Coward.
Yeah, we manage church.
Yes, everyone, there's a, you can also.
Oh, yes, yes, that's true. Thank you, Rob, for reminding us of that. Anything else from council? We do have on our agenda a closed session for tonight, which pertains to personnel issue, so I'm going to ask our attorney to let me read the appropriate statute that we follow for going into closed session.
The motion it made would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-31811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee with respect to public officer or employee.
Before I ask for a motion of a second to go into closed session, I just remind our public that when we do go into closed session, this is for, basically for information purposes, we will take no action, we'll come back out tonight from this closed session, back into open session before we would make any interim. So with that, I have a motion to, a motion from Mr. Dinger. Second. All in favor to go into closed session, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll go into the conference room here to our right.